Everyone. Thank you for coming out. The meeting tonight is going to be streamed on YouTube and will also be available on Facebook and the Village's website. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Clerk Saladino to call the roll.
Trustee Augustine.
Here.
Trustee Gale.
Here.
Trustee McGee. Trustee O'Brien.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
President Kukler.
Here. And Trustee McGee notified me today that she was feeling ill and unable to make the meeting, so we wish her the best and thank everybody else for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd ask Clerk Saladino to invite the audience to stand and lead us, and Clerk Saladino will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
Next up is the President's Report, and I'd like to start by welcoming Kevin Quinn, the new Village's Planner, to the staff. We appreciate you coming on board and looking forward to your hard work. So, thank you, Kevin. Next, as everybody knows, it's back-to-school time. Last week was back-to-school for many elementary and our high school students. There's a lot of excitement in the air as the kids get to reunite with their friends and get settled in on the new school year. The parents get a little break, at least during the day, and everybody is happy. We wish the kids a great start to the year and remind them and the motorists to be vigilant when traveling through the village. Traffic and pedestrian safety is a priority for the village, and we're encouraging everyone to be aware of their surroundings while navigating the Village's roadways and sidewalks. To encourage safety, the Police Department began their back-to-school safety campaign, which includes paying special attention to school zones and an increased presence around schools. It also included and includes an electronic message board on Ogden alerting motorists that school is back in session. During the campaign, Facebook posts are planned to help raise awareness of school zone safety. The Police Department is hosting a town hall meeting tomorrow on traffic safety. It's going to be at 6:00 PM at the library, and I know Chief Griffin welcomes everybody and encourages everybody to attend. In addition, last week, there was a safety enforcement and meeting booth that was set up at the Metro train station. It was spearheaded originally by Steve Palmer on the Metro Board. It involved the Police Department, our Fire Department, as well as the Metro Police Department. Several tickets were issued, even though all those groups were there, for people crossing on foot while the gates were down. And again, the idea was to promote safety, and especially now that it's back-to-school time. I was able to meet with the Director from Metro, who indicated a willingness to speak with the schools. So, I do plan to reach out and make sure that the schools know that a Metro representative is available and perhaps can work with our Police Department and Fire Department in scheduling presentations to the students. Moving on, stormwater management. I know everybody knows, last week, LaGrange experienced two very large storms. The first took place last Sunday morning on the 17th, two Sundays ago, and resulted in approximately 1.8 inches of falling rain in an hour. Tuesday night, approximately 1.6 inches fell in a half hour. Both storms roughly equated to a five-year storm. By five-year storm, that means there's a 20% chance that it may, that you may have a five-year storm in any year. Obviously, with two in one year and two in one week, those odds are something. But Public Works Crew responded to the events to keep, in their best efforts, to keep drains clear and to ensure public safety. The Ogden Avenue underpass was closed due to flooding caused in both events, and again, we're working with IDOT and MWRD to see what can be fixed on that Ogden Avenue situation. Unfortunately, there were several basement backups and street floodings were reported by residents. We understand street floodings. They are going to happen. The basement backups, we're really trying our best to solve those problems whenever possible. So, for those experience impacts from the storms, the Village circulated a Cook County Department of Emergency Management and Regional Security Survey to assess damage. Please, if you haven't done so, complete those forms. It helps us notify our elected leaders about the severity of the problems. We obviously, the Board extends all the sympathies that we have for those suffered from the impacts of the flooding. Those that are concerned about flooding in their basement and do not have a backflow prevention device or an overhead sewer, please consider participating in the Village Sewer Backup Prevention Grant Program for installation of either solution. The program provides a 50% reimbursement of eligible costs. It's subject to a maximum reimbursement of $3,000 for backflow devices or $5,000 for overhead sewers. Again, it's a great program. If you haven't done it, you really should look at making that investment. Beyond the program, the Village continues to make substantial progress in addressing flooding concerns. The Chancery Court trial was won over about a year ago, and we're anxiously awaiting for the appellate court decision. While the case is pending in the appellate court, three engineering companies have been engaged in design work and permitting assistance for the Fifty Street project, with the permitting process edging closer to completion. The first phase of the design and engineering for the Sunset and Elm, and that's also called the Lyons Township High School project, has been completed. The Village secured $2 million in grants in support of the project, and working with the Metropolitan Reclamation District, the Village has submitted to the Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program for the remaining funds necessary to construct the project. We continue to hope that we will be getting that award. All told, the Village is steadfast in working with its engineers and partner agencies to seek and to address and mitigate the impacts of stormwater damage, or stormwater in LaGrange. And as always, we're thankful to our federal and state representatives and agencies like the MWRD, the Illinois Department of Transportation, and Cook County for helping assisting us as we pursue solutions. The LaGrange Environmental Quality Commission, in partnership with Go Green Greater LaGrange, will be hosting a native plant presentation with the University of Illinois Extension Master Gardener. The presentation will be here in the Village Auditorium on Thursday, August 28th, from 7:00 to 8:00. All are encouraged to stop by and discover the benefits of native plants and learn ways to incorporate them into your landscape. More details can be found on the Village's website. It's almost time for Diversity Day at LaGrange. This year's theme is serving our community. The Community Diversity Group will host its 34th Annual Race Unity Rally on Sunday, September 14th, at 3:00 PM, right here in the Village Hall. Join Desiree Scully, Executive Director of Aging Care Connections, who will be featured during the rally, as will Regina McClinton, who will be honored with the Many Car Service Award, and Jim Henkley, who will be honored for Diversity Achievement Award. The rally will also include an invocation from Reverend Brian Dambro of the First Congregational Church, the Carrying Place Youth Choir, diversity essays, LTHS students sharing thoughts on identity and belonging, and much more. Additional Diversity Day events include anti-racist Storytime on Thursday, September 11th, at 10:30 at the LaGrange Farmers Market, and a screening and discussion of a documentary, A Binding Truth, on Friday, September 12th, at 6:00 PM at the Public Library. We thank the Community Diversity Group for its consistently positive messages of inclusion and understanding, which serves to strengthen and improve the quality of life for everyone in our community. Thank every, I want to thank everyone involved in planning and supporting this important annual event. I specifically want to recognize the efforts of Marian Honal Wilson, Harold Gibson, Becky Lorenzen, and others associated with the group. We look forward to the events ahead and the Village Board's proclamation regarding Race Unity Day, which will take place during our next meeting. And with that, I'd ask if, Manager Knight, if you have a report?
There is. Thank you, President Kukler, and good evening, everyone. In observance of Labor Day holiday, the Monday, September 1st, Residential Refuge Collection will be pushed back by a day. This means that residents north of 47th Street will have their pickup on Tuesday, September 2nd, instead of Monday. Residents south of 47th Street will have their pickup on Friday, September 5th, rather than Thursday. Just a reminder on brush pickup related to the holiday, the Village's next monthly brush pickup for residents will begin on Tuesday, September 2nd. And then lastly, in observance of the holiday, the Village offices will be closed on that day to reopen September 2nd. President Kukler, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Village Manager Knight. Village Clerk Saladino, I'd like to request that you read the items on the consent agenda, followed by those appearing under current business.
Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote because they already have been considered fully by the Board at a previous meeting or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the Board of Trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. Item A, Resolution Approving a Bill of Sale for the Acceptance of Public Infrastructure Improvements Related to the Property at the Northeast Corner of the Intersection of LaGrange Road and Ogden Avenue. Item B, Resolution Approving a Purchase Agreement for a 2025 Ford Expedition from DiRazio Ford. Item C, Resolution Approving a Purchase Agreement with Equipment Management Company for Extrication Equipment. Item D, An Ordinance Amending Section 150-20.C of the LaGrange Code of Ordinances and the Village Fee and Fines Schedules. Item E is the July 14th, 2025 Consolidated Voucher. Under current business, this agenda item includes consideration of matters being presented to the Board of Trustees for action. Item A, An Ordinance Approving Variation from the LaGrange Zoning Code at 67 Bluff Avenue. And Item B, An Ordinance Approving Variations from the LaGrange Zoning Code for Ground Sign at 2 North Brainerd Avenue.
Thank you, Clerk Saladino. The next item on tonight's agenda is public comments regarding agenda items. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience that has any comments on those items listed on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second.
I'm for approval of consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Trustee Gale.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Peterson. Any discussion regarding items on the consent agenda?
Yeah, it's been a long summer. I, as previously stated, I recuse myself from voting on any agenda items related to the Village prosecutor.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Hearing no other comments, I would ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Moving on then to current business, we have under Item A, An Ordinance Approving Variations from the LaGrange Zoning Code relating to 67 Bluff Avenue, and I'd ask Trustee Thompson to provide an overview.
Thank you, President Kukler. Tranquility Builders is the owner of a property at 67 Bluff Avenue, the subject property, and has applied for a variation from the zoning code, Section 3-110C1, minimum front, minimum front yard, and 3-1103, minimum side yard, and 10-101C3A, access to street maximum driveway width, to conduct, excuse me, to construct a detached garage and driveway accessed off Tilden Avenue. The subject property is a through lot. As a through lot, the property has two required front yards along Bluff and Tilden Avenues. Zoning code, Section 14-303-E-1-A, authorizes variations, allows for the reduction of any bulk, bulk yard or space requirement. On June 26th, the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on the application, and the applicant testified about the desire to construct a home with a detached garage accessed off Tilden Avenue, similar to the character of the area and other houses in the area. The ZBA discussed the uniqueness of the subject property and the block on which it is located. The Commissioner noted that, noted that while through lots are rare, most of the lots on this block are through lots, and most through lots are improved with garage access off Tilden, similar to the applicant's proposal. The ZBA voted 6 to 1 to recommend approval of the proposed variation. Staff recommends approval of the proposed ordinance granting zoning variations to allow construction of the detached garage at 67 Bluff Avenue, as reflected in the ZBA's recommendations. Make a motion that we pass this as well.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson, Trustee Augustine. Any discussion regarding this matter? Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. I support this matter. I thought that the ZBA did a thorough job at going through the points and addressing the needs, coming to the just decision. In reviewing the minutes, though, from the meeting, I noticed that Commissioner Capan, Capan had some observations and some questions about how he feels it would be possibly a good idea to have a meeting with the Village Board to come up with general policy on certain things. And we've discussed that at budget meetings and at different points along the way over the last year, and I know that we have money in the budget for more training and orientation, and we talked about doing some cross-board and commission meetings, and I'm just wondering if anything like that is planned for in the near future.
We do attempt to do regular training with our Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Designer Review Commission. We're actually currently evaluating an opportunity, perhaps this fall, in conjunction with another community, and then we have made available other sort of remote learning opportunities via webinar and Zoom meetings that are offered through the Illinois chapter of the American Planning Association.
Would any of those things be with this Board and the Plan Commission, or any of the commissions, or just them amongst themselves?
Those are more trainings for their specific role and an understanding their purview as a recommending body to this Board.
Would that ever be something that we could look into doing, or is that a no-no? Because it has been brought up by different commissions and this Board before, and I'm just wondering if we are interested in talking it through at some point after the meeting?
You know, I suppose, I think one of the example would be the comprehensive plan and how we had the separate groups, you know, together on that particular effort. There are instances where particular development projects might warrant combined meetings, so those are, you know, examples where you might consider something along those lines. If there are specific kind of training opportunities you want to explore, I'm happy to have a conversation with you and figure out what work there.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Any other questions or comments regarding this? Seeing none, I would ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Moving on, again, being referred to Trustee Thompson, An Ordinance Approving Variations from the LaGrange Zoning Code for Ground Sign at 2 North Brainerd Avenue.
Thank you, President Kukler. Walid Alfar, the applicant, is the owner of a property at 2 North Brainerd Avenue, the subject property, which, for those of you who don't know, is the now Shell gas station at the corner of Brainerd. Guess it was a sit go recently. Is applied for variation for the zoning code, Sections 11-109E-3, maximum sign height, and 11-109F-2, minimum setback, to construct a new ground sign on the subject property. The existing sign on the property also does not comply with requirements for the maximum sign height or minimum setback. On July 17th, the 2025, the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on the application. The applicant testified about the physical constraints on the property that protrude a larger setback or a wider ground sign. The ZBA discussed the uniqueness of the subject property and how grind signs are common improvements for similar uses. The ZBA also noted that the request of relief for sign height was more than the minimum necessary to provide a functional ground sign for the applicant. The ZBA voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of the proposed variation with two conditions: the maximum height of the new sign may not exceed the height of the current sign, and the bottom of the sign base must be improved for aesthetics. Staff recommended approval of proposed ordinance granting zoning variations to allow construction of the ground sign at 2 North Brainerd Avenue, as reflected in the ZBA's recommendations. I make a motion that we also pass this.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson and Trustee O'Brien. Any discussion regarding this matter? I would just want to add, I do appreciate the ZBA's hard work on this. I'm glad that they did not allow any increased height on this sign. I think, quite frankly, the sign is as big as would be appropriate for LaGrange. While many gas stations in other towns have larger signs, there's no place in LaGrange that has this type of sign at all. And this intersection with the number of high school students that cross, putting a larger sign to me would be a disservice to the whole community. So, I appreciate the ZBA holding firm and saying that you can replace the sign and should improve the aesthetics, but you cannot increase the size. With that, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next up is public comments for matters not on tonight's agenda.
My name is John Pluto. I live at 718 East Avenue. First thing, Mr. Kukler, question on the President's Report. You spoke about the Assistance Backflow Program, Assistance Backflow Program. We talked about the Lions, South Lyons Township residents of LaGrange, and they're not covered in that, in that program? Or you didn't know?
I believe I said I didn't know if there was any limitation on the program for any of the residents, including the residents in the South Lyons Township sanitary district area. I'm not sure if Village Manager Knight knows the answer now or not.
I don't believe staff has had the opportunity to look into that detail. I believe the detail is available on our website, and from what I recall, I was not here at the time of the program being constructed. However, if I'm recalling some of the minutes I came across, the thought was the sewer fund is paid into by folks that pay into the sewer fund, and that should go to support folks that generate the revenue for the program.
I thought that I heard that it was funded by the county.
That's correct to an extent. So, the way the program is structured, it's the first $50,000 out of that program, needs to be village funds under the purview of the program as it's currently constructed, and then from there, it's the county funds available through ARPA funding through the federal level.
So, you're telling me that the residents of South Lyons Township are not eligible for that project?
No one is eligible for the county funding until that initial $50,000 has been spent in any one fiscal year.
So, in other words, people in South Lyons Township are not eligible now for that?
We are looking into whether or not we could use the county funds for that purpose. We haven't had any determination from the county on that as of yet.
Well, I have one of your old flood control call-in hotlines, and the one section near my house has a few sewer backups there. And, you know, it would be nice if those people that live in LaGrange were also covered by that project. I don't have a problem with it, but there are some residents in South Lyons Township that could use the assistance. So, this is something that is in the works, or it's never going to happen, that they they won't be eligible for?
Well, let me jump in there. I think it's an issue that the Board could look at. We can first ask staff to tell us how much of the funding has already been spent and how close we are to the $50,000. Obviously, to me, it's an easy decision if it's the county money. We would love to have them take full advantage of that. And if it's not the county money, then it's really a policy decision for the Board to make, and I think it's a matter that the Board would probably want to discuss.
Yeah, you're not talking about very many people. There's only like two pink dots in there that are sewer backups. I'm just...
Yeah, but again, we would make it available to everyone.
I would hope so.
So, and again, if it's the county money, we would love if more than two took advantage.
Okay. What I'm here to talk about tonight is the contamination at Sedgwick Park. The Park District stated that they would do not, would not do any further testing to determine if there's any contamination. The Village tests, will the Village test the catch basins at, at the park?
I don't believe the Village is going to take any role in testing.
Okay, well, the only reason is because you guys own a piece of that park. You have an easement that you bought in 2010 to put a water line across, and it's close to the affected catch basins. And my thoughts were that when you guys put the water line across that park in 2010, you could have disturbed the soil and brought contaminated soil to the top. And those can, those catch basins need to be tested. It's like the black box of an aircraft. It tells us everything that's coming across the groundwater at that point. I have a picture of the water running off the handicap rancet at 49th Street. There's thousands of gallons, and that means that those catch basins fill up. And right next to the bleachers there are where all the little children crawl around and play on the ground. We need to know that that, that park is 100% safe for their enjoyment, and we don't want to have any cancers coming back in 15 or 20 years and going, oh, that's what caused it. So, from the LaGrange Park District minutes, Patty, oh, I thought we got a new set here. Patty King from White and Company recapped the soil findings from Sedgwick and continued to present the new design plan. Commissioner Weber asked her if she had experience in dealing with this type of contamination issue. She answered that while she is learning along the way, they are working with experts in this area, and the civil engineers who work behind the scenes have experience and deal with this scope of contamination, as does TSC and the Soil Testing Company. Well, TSC blew their report on their history of the north adjoining property because they said nothing about the gas company plant that was there in 1909, which is, carries all the contaminants that are buried underneath that park, or very many of them. So, this is a serious issue, and the Park District has stated that they will cover the Major League Field with three feet of dirt. So, President Aped reminded everyone that the Park District is not part of the village flood plan. Is that correct? They don't, they don't care about our flood planning?
I'm sure that's not what President Aped meant.
It's in the minutes of his meeting. I got, I'll give you a copy of those if you want it. I can't make this stuff up. However, we meet the requirements set forth by the village. So, he's saying that you guys are calling the shots, and I think all of those catch basins by the, by the baseball fields there should be tested to see if they're clean or dirty. And if you're going to chintz out on five more tests, what do you value a life of a child? It's really sad that they think this. So, they're all set to bury that Major League Field, and it's going to cause more flood So they're all set to bury that Major League Field, and it's going to cause more flooding issues for the people that live on the fifth, fourth, third, and second depressions. So I would hope that you people look into this very closely before you give them the go-ahead. The other question is, when you were away, they approved, the rest of the board approved open spaces. Could somebody explain to me what the Open Spaces Act was, that they gave them a variation at the park district?
I'm not sure if anybody can address that. I'm not aware of what you're discussing.
Well, you weren't here for that meeting.
Okay.
They voted for Open Spaces Act, and I don't know what that entails.
I don't know. I'm sure we could, if you email us, we can answer the question better.
Nothing? I'll have to go back into the minutes and bring it back for the next meeting.
Either that or email us, whichever is the way.
I like coming to the meetings.
You're always welcome.
Okay, well, anyway, at that end of the park, we have tons of water, and we don't need the park district to be irresponsible. Last item, and it's your favorite. In 2012, the village requested an evaluation... I thought we got a new setup here.
Stay in one place.
The village, in 2012, the village requested an evaluation of the freshwater pumping station reservoir located at East Avenue in Plainfield. I have concerns regarding some statements that are in the report. Okay?
Are you talking about the 2012 report?
The 2012 report.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think there's been other reports, or we're planning on doing reports or something?
We're planning, we talked about this. I looked up the minutes, and it was September of 2023.
I think just recently, if I can just interrupt you?
Yeah.
Village Manager Knight, are we doing something with these, or have we engaged a consultant for this?
I'm sorry, I was busy emailing, trying to remedy the microphone issue.
That's all right. What Mr. Pluto is bringing up, I believe, is the pumping station and whether or not there's been an inspection in the last few years and what we plan to do with that.
There's been an inspection the last couple of months. We have the inspection report, I believe it's in draft form, if I'm not mistaken, so that'll be finalized. We'll have a list of actionable items from that. The concern over the reservoir was not founded. I believe there is effervescence on the outside, but there's no structural deficiencies. Director O'Brien, is there anything else to add to that?
No, the draft report's coming in about two weeks. Yeah, other than that, yeah, the inspection rolling very well, and they didn't find any major defects.
What type of test did they do? Did they do a dive test?
What we're going to do is we're going to wait for the report, and then if you have questions about the report, you'll be able to ask. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to start asking questions before you saw the report. Why spend the time?
The last report was done in 2013.
Okay.
And in the conclusions of that report, it was recommended that the tank be cleaned and covered with a coating. Okay? Naperville does the same thing. They have the same Baxter and Woodman tanks. They do it on a five-year basis. It protects that water reservoir. We have effervescence coming out of it now. If we don't maintain that tank, we're going to have a premature tank failure. This is a common maintenance thing. Back in 2013, they could have done this coating for about $54,000, and it would be a good practice to do this. If we can coat the parking garage floor, I'm sure that we really enjoy our freshwater supply. So I was just wondering if you were going to update me on that or not?
Once we're ready to have a final report, you will be definitely getting a copy and being able to review it and ask your questions.
Is that something I'm going to have to foil, or are you going to send it to me?
If it's up to me, I'll be sent to you.
Okay. I'll hold you for your word.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on matters not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, are there any trustee comments? Trustee Peterson.
I just wanted to mention that the Lions Township was, again, offering the Repair Cafe in September and October, and I was happy to give them a shout-out. I went there in the last month, had one of my favorite necklaces repaired for free. They are very welcoming, they're very skilled, they help you to help keeping fabrics and small instruments out of landfill, and they're going to give you a cup of coffee and a donut, and you take a chair, and someone takes care of you. So I'm looking at two more on... Everybody. I'll stay back here. September 20th and October 18th. So I highly encourage everybody to come on out if you've got small items that need to repair. They're very happy to say hello.
Thank you, trustee Peterson. Any other trustee comments? Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. Just bears repeating again that tomorrow night is the, let's see, how do we officially language it here, the Traffic Safety Town Hall meeting, which I'm really excited about, which a number of residents are excited about, a chance to come to the library, to meet with our police, and talk about some of the initiatives that they're working on, and speeding, and of course, these e-bikes. Those are the two things that I get asked about the most, is speeding in certain areas, how we enforce that, how we prevent some of it, and some of the confusing laws around e-bikes, and what parents should know, and a number of other things, truck enforcement. So as President Kukler said at the top, this is a great meeting, and we hope to see, as many of you are interested attending. And then the other thing is just to mention, and you may, many people may have seen this, it's being posted around town, but we do have a position open for seeking qualified consultants to help us manage and enhance our communication services and social media, getting the word out about meetings and important things in town. And there is an RFP out right now, or up right now, and its proposals are due on September 8th. And for anyone who wants to find out information, they can come to our village website, go to LinkedIn, and just kind of do a couple Google searches. But we're really excited about the next generation of how we communicate out and how people can communicate in and share information, and so that's worth looking into, and share them with your friends who are in that industry.
Thank you, trustee Augustine. We are going in a closed session tonight. At this time, the village intends to meet in closed session under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act in Section 2(c)(1) to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Section 2(c)(5) for the acquisition of property, and Section 2(c)(21) for discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the act. The village board will not reconvene to open session as no formal action will occur following the closed session. May have a motion and a second to enter into closed session.
I move we enter into closed session.
Second.
And Clerk Saladino, please call a roll on that motion.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
And we're going to be moving into closed session at 8:15, and we'll be reconvening downstairs. Thank you, everybody. And we will leave back in two weeks this time.